All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the time and place set for the February 2024 regular Royal Oak Planning Commission meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and I'll start down on this end if I have the commissioners and staff introduce themselves for the record, please. Oh, way down there.
Deborah Ridenberg, Director of planning.
Anne Beeky.
Clyde Esprit.
Charlie Douglas, City Commissioner.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
Woody Gantina.
Jim Ellison.
Mike Fournay, Mayor.
And I'm Gary Casado, the chairperson. All right. The first order of business here is to approve the minutes for the January 9, 2024 meeting. Have the commissioners had a chance to look at these minutes? Is there any questions, corrections, comments, motion on the meeting minutes from January 9?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mr. Ellison. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gantina. Is there any discussion among commissioners on the motion? All right. Seeing none, a call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. All right. I guess I should have already done this. Is there any, before we move on, is there anybody who needs to add anything to the agenda tonight? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment on non-agenda items. If you are wanting to speak on an issue that is not on our agenda, now is the time to do it. Anybody out in the audience who'd like to come up, please come on up and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Katie Look. I am here representing YIMBY Oakland County, a new chapter of the National Group YIMBY Action. YIMBY stands for Yes in My Backyard. I am here to speak in support of more housing options throughout Royal Oak. Our area already faces a housing shortage and a lack of both affordable and attainable housing needed in order to maintain growth in our city. We know that Royal Oak is a desirable area, that we're nowhere near the capacity of Royal Oak's peak population, and we have room to support more neighbors from all generations and all backgrounds. As a resident of Royal Oak, I want more neighbors. I want those who have lived here for decades to be able to age in their community, and I want the city where I've been lucky enough to plant my family to be a vibrant and sustainable place for decades to come. More housing options, especially those on the more affordable and attainable levels of the spectrum, will make Royal Oak a more sustainable place, down to the nitty-gritty. I think that ADUs should be allowed citywide, and I support upzoning citywide to allow missing middle housing in every neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else I see? Come on up. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Rick Kralowski. I'm here to discuss the survey that was here. First off, there was one direct question regarding Woodward, which is very nice. I mean, it was a direct question. Do you think we should do this? I don't think the results are what you were looking for, but at least it was a direct question. How about we have a direct question on single-family zoning? Every time we have one of your surveys, you skirt around it. Let's have a direct question as to whether we want to get rid of single-family zoning in Royal Oak and cut the crap, just one time, and just see what we want to do. Also, with regards to the housing thing, I saw the survey. There's a whole lot of stuff, but not a whole lot of data. For example, we need more rentals. What's the vacancy rate for the stuff we have? We've been building stuff in this town for at least 15 years. What's the vacancy rate? Does anybody have the data on that? How do you know you need more if you don't even know how much you are being utilized as it is? The ADUs, where are you going to put them? Anyplace where you want? The notion that, I saw a comment that, well, it's for the seniors because we're going to have grandma and grandpa live above the garage of some son's house. Are you kidding me? Show me a survey anywhere where seniors are going, yeah, that's what I want to do. I want us to live above the garage of my kid's house or in a little shack in the backyard. Bet me what the results will be on that. Now, if you want to have something for seniors living in place, absolutely, let's do that. There's a lot of things we can do in that regard. There's a lot of seniors that I talk to don't want to move. They like it where they are. They like the neighborhood. They like their neighbors. They have a little bit of trouble sometimes, but you know, you can have neighbors help out with some of the maintenance, no problem. You can also have stuff where you can maybe have it cheaper to add on a ramp or something if they need that. But the notion that you're just going to want to gut everything and start dropping multifamily housing everywhere in this city is ludicrous. As far as affordability goes, how about when you guys approve a project, you have some kind of affordability requirement? Because we've had buildings on Washington, Main Street, every place else going for $1,800 a month, but where do you want to put the affordability? You want to dump it into the neighborhoods. Okay? ADUs are nothing but another way to have more rentals, and I think we have quite a few enough of those based on the occupancy rates, and we have now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Right here. Please introduce yourself. Three minutes.
Bill Harrison, citizen of Royal Oak. I've got two comments, one on the capital improvement program. Question is, where would this budget be plotted on what I call the going-out-of-business curve that is shown on page 56 of the 2425 Early Input Budget Session Report? It was skipped over during that review. And then two, I'm sorry, it was skipped over during the budget review with the commission and the department heads. Then, secondly, the master plan draft, Chapter 4, for more housing options. Chapter 4 is, like Rick said, is pushing ADUs and multifamily housing within the neighborhoods. It recommends updating the zoning code to form-based districts. How many times were we advised that the master plan is not zoning, but in reality it is a driver of zoning? The 15-minute city concept is implied on pages 5, 8, and 9. The 15-minute city is a concept promoted by the World Economic Forum, a communist organization that I've mentioned many times before. Page 9 states, "Revised the future land use map in order to enable multifamily within neighborhood nodes and activity centers." Nodes and activity centers allude to the 15-minute city concept. The term "single-family zoning" is conspicuous by its absence. I just want to mention that, you know, during the charrettes, Matt Lambert from DPZ told me that I cannot have what I described as my country-atmosphere neighborhood. This is what you get when you hire a bunch of communists from Portland, Oregon.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, geez. Hi. Janice Wagman. I just want to clarify, there's going to be another time to speak for the capital improvements because it's a public hearing, correct?
It's what it says. Let me just double-check. Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. So I have something to talk about that's not on the agenda, which is currently, and this is a rerun for people who watched last night, currently, when we have a public hearing, the only way that the people are notified is if they happen to look at an agenda every month at planning, zoning, or the city commission. Or they live within 300 feet, they get a postcard or a mailing of some sort, or they happen to go through a newspaper and find the notice. I don't think that's enough. I did a survey out on social media, and overwhelmingly, people were in agreement that we need something like Berkeley does, which is this. It's a lawn sign they put out in their yards, or the city puts out in the property, and when the developer or the homeowner or someone is bringing something forward that's going to generate a public hearing, they sign in a permission slip to allow the city to come out and put this in their front yard. This would notify people in the neighborhood that live more than 300 feet away that something's going on or that something's happening, so they can look it up, they can find out what's happening, whether they're for or against, but at least it's transparency, and they know that something is on the agenda for change. So I'm advocating for this. I hope you are in agreement, and the city commission will bring it forward for discussion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Back here.
Oh, sorry. Hi. My name is Sean. I'm a homeowner in Royal Oak. I'm also a member of YIMBY Oakland County. Just have a few comments today. So first, as a homeowner, I am extremely worried about the rising cost of housing, my apologies, and my ability to stay in Royal Oak. I currently do not have a family, but am looking to start one in the future. My house is too small, and I can't afford a $1.5 million house to afford one for my family. I am worried that I will not be able to stay in Royal Oak. None of my friends are able to afford a home in Royal Oak, and we are all shut out of actually being able to buy something in the city. I'm extremely worried about that. In addition, my mother, who is aging, I love her so much, and she's still walking around, but eventually she's going to need a wheelchair. My house is not wheelchair compliant. It would really, really nice, either I'd have to spend a lot of money to make my house, my house was built in 1947, to make it wheelchair compliant, or to have to get a new house, which at the moment I don't think I'm going to be able to afford in Royal Oak. Just also on that note, I was part of the master plan, you know, listening and planning sessions. A lot of people are concerned about the lack of neighborhood schools, a lack of police officers, lack of firefighters. We can't ask for more teachers and more cops and more firefighters if we don't provide the housing for them. You can't ask something for nothing, and that's what that seems like. Royal Oak used to have 70,000 to 80,000 people, just fine. We got along just fine, and now we're at down to 50,000. We have more than enough room to have those people, and again, you know, to build affordable housing for this. I guess the theme of the night is ADUs. I'm in favor of that because I own a house. It's my property. As long as I'm meeting the health and safety requirements, I want to be able to do with my own property as I wish, and I don't want the city getting involved in that. So that's why I'm in favor of that, just because it's my own property. And there's two other comments. I live by Woodward, 100% in favor of doing road diet. Ferndale's doing it. I drive through Woodward for work. There is no issues with traffic, and it's certainly a lot safer to walk by Woodward now with that road diet. I believe that's something that Royal Oak should pursue. And then lastly, as somebody who's used the train station in downtown Royal Oak, it's very small, and quite frankly, it's not becoming a very city. You can go along the train, take the train to Chicago, you see like these teeny-tiny little towns, 10,000 people. They have buildings with bathrooms and waiting areas for their train station. With our train station, it's just bust out next to the tracks. I've seen children waiting there with luggage as freight trains goes past. So I think something needs to be done with the train station, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishes to speak on a non-agenda item out there? I see a hand over here.
Hi. I'm Trish Oliver, a resident for almost 40 years. I actually wanted to speak on agenda item number three.
Let me just ask real quick, is that going to be a public hearing? She can speak. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. This is one-fourth of your master plan document. It is full of the predetermined outcomes that everyone predicted. Looking around the room, I see a very low turnout on this important issue. My opinion is that I give you an F for your transparency policies and your public notice policies. This is a document that should be receiving more public attention, and you seem to be avoiding that. Don't conduct any discussions on this tonight or make any decisions until you've properly informed the public. I recommend adjourning this item and postponing any discussion until later date, until you can figure out how to notify the public with more information so that they can make intelligent public comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else for non-agenda item? Is that a hand?
No.
No.
High five.
No. All right. All right. Seeing none, going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public comment part of the meeting tonight, and we'll go to new business. Go ahead.
Mr. Casado, after a great discussion with Mr. Murphy, it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion that we move the capital improvement program behind Items E1 and E2 so we can get the petitioners on their way, and then we can have the detailed discussion that we need to have on Items E1 as well as Items E3.
All right. There's a motion to move the capital improvements program discussion. Where do you want to move it? I'm sorry?
After.
After the two.
After one and two?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a second or? Okay. Second by Mr. Ellison. Any discussion of this? It does seem like the capital improvements might be a long discussion, or we don't know how long it would be, but yes, I think this is a good idea. So any other discussion? I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're changing the order of the agenda. We're putting the capital improvements after the sign variances. So now we can move on to other business under E. Mr. Murphy, you want to tell us about the first item here?
Certainly. SV 240201. This is the new shell filling station in convenience store. It's under construction at the corner of South Main Street and Lincoln, which is in the city's downtown and in the city sign area number three, under the city's sign ordinance. Sign Area 3 does not allow for monument or pole signs, such as the one that you see on the screen, which is the one that's been there for quite some time. That freestanding sign is non-conforming, and the petitioner is proposing to remove that sign and install a new sign on the property, which is a monument sign, lower in height at five feet. So they're seeking a variance in order to allow a monument sign. Additionally, we apply the standards of the sign area that does allow freestanding signs, which requires that a freestanding sign be no less than seven feet from the nearest property line. You'll see on the screen that along Main Street, the proposed sign is between three and four feet off of the Main Street right of way, and along Lincoln, it has a seven-foot setback. So they've accommodated that clear vision triangle, which they've shown on here as the 10-foot corner triangle, so that when someone comes up to the streetlight to stop along Lincoln, they have the ability to see, which is a requirement for buildings as well as signs. So they provide that, but yet they aren't 10 feet off on both sides. So they're seeking a variance from that standard as well.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Commissioner Douglas?
What kinds of signs are allowed for businesses in Sign Area 3?
It does allow for signs on the facade of the building. It wouldn't allow for this freestanding sign, and I don't know whether the petitioner has applied yet for permits for signage on the canopy of the structure. If they do, and that doesn't comply, they may be back in front of you for variance for that signage on the canopy of the pump, where the pumps are. But it does allow for wall signs on the buildings, on the building itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Beeky.
Could you explain a little bit why the monument signs are not allowed in this area? Does it have to do with the visibility and walkability being in the downtown, or what's kind of the logic behind that?
Well, most of the properties in the downtown are smaller, and most of them, the buildings take up the entire site themselves, and that is to your very point of creating a walkability. For properties such as this that are non-conforming, certainly a filling station is not allowed use in the downtown. It's logical, like all filling stations, no matter where they are, that they would want a monument or freestanding sign. But in general, it wouldn't lend itself to, exactly as you pointed out, a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere, that type of sign, let alone the use.
Any other questions? I have a question. Are there other gas stations within the downtown?
No, there's one on the northeast corner of 11 Mile and Washington, but that's stone throw outside of downtown. The petitioner's letter does indicate a number of, he references a number of freestanding signs in the downtown, one of them being directly across the street in the park that the city owns. So there are other freestanding signs in the city, but it's not the norm.
All right. Very good. All right. I think it's time to bring the petitioner forward. Please come on up and introduce yourself and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you seek.
Yes. Good evening. Ms. Cowan, on behalf of Safeway Acquisition Company, which is the applicant, and with me is the principal and owner, Sam Baydoun, and also we have Brian Stakely from our sign company, Avir Sign Company, who we're working with. So I'm going to be brief because we have a brief request. In December of 2021, you approved special land use and site plan, and the sign question was deferred to a later date. Your actions facilitated a total rebuild of the site, and the good news is, we're about 30 days away. God, and the weather willing, and the workers, because everybody's got to show up, and if you were out there, you know, at all, looking at the site, there's been a lot of activity. It's a beehive of activity right now, trying to get all the different finish items done for the site. So simply, we're asking to replace a longtime freestanding tall sign with a monument-style sign. And as been pointed out by Mr. Murphy, there's a number of signs, monument-style signs in the downtown area, Oakland Community College, United Methodist Church, the Cardelli Law Firm, Farmer's Market, and Centennial Common. So even the Detroit Zoo, who I think is the next item, has a monument sign on their property. So we're requesting that along with two very, I think, modest variance requests, and that's to allow us to put the sign, you know, respect, as has been pointed out, the triangular clearance area, but if we can put it right within that green belt area, we won't be changing the maneuvering lanes. And as you know from other gas station sites, the maneuvering lanes are always a big issue in making sure there's enough space, and if you grant this modest setback request, we'll be allowed to preserve those as is right now, and that's very important to the business. So I think, in conclusion, every gas station you go to has the price, at least some of the prices for some of the gas, along with a sign of what brand it is, and this will continue to be the Shell brand. And really, in these times of elevated gas prices, people like to shop a little bit, and they also have their favorite brand. What's a little bit unique about this property, especially if you're approaching from the south, is that with the setback of the gas pumps and the actual building, the convenience store building, really, if you don't see the sign, you'll literally have to be right on top of it to see that it's a gas station. So we think that's important. It's the only one in the downtown. People who need gas are looking for it if they're coming to Royal Oak to visit, and also we service a number of people who now live in downtown and have vehicles as their gas station of choice because it's convenient nearby. So for all those reasons, we respect for the request that you approve the variances requested for the monument sign, which we think will be a great improvement, a vast improvement, over the freestanding sign.
All right. Are there questions for the petitioner from the commissioners? All right. Seeing none.
Thank you very much.
No. So is there discussion here? We don't have, this is not a public hearing?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. Do the commissioners have questions for Mr. Murphy? Comments among themselves? Argument? Motion?
Public comment?
It's not a public hearing unless you want to make a motion to open up public hearing.
Yeah. We've always had public comment before. Has that changed?
Sign variance? Sign variance?
Okay. It's not a long time ago. I remember when I was on this commission, we always had public comment any item. I remember it was the same.
We did.
All right. Well.
Ma'am, just asking. If that's not your comment, that's fine.
It's okay with me, but.
I mean, I think it's a good practice. I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
All right. Is there a second?
That's fine.
No, I thought so. Okay. Let's have some discussion.
I disagree.
All right. Tell us why.
People, you made it clear, people could, you know, speak on items, I mean, other than public hearing items, people had an opportunity to speak on it. We've taken a big item on our agenda, the capital improvement project, and moved it down, so people are still here and have an opportunity to hear the outcome of it, so I don't feel that's necessary.
All right. Other, Mr. Ellison?
The term "non-agenda items" was specifically referenced when you called public comment earlier. The chair called for public comments, it said, if you want to comment on non-agenda items.
All right. Good point.
All right. Any other discussion on this?
No one's going to speak anyway, is there?
Okay. I'll just say this. I think if there are people here who want to speak on this issue, I think it would be a shame not to let them speak. So I would vote in favor of this, and we'll see if anybody wants to talk. That's my position. Any other comments? Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. The motion is to allow public comment on the sign variance issue before us by Mr. Esprit. Second by Mr. Ellison. Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. We've got six to one. Motion passes. So we're going to have public comment if anybody wants to. If anybody would like to speak on this agenda item, you can come on up, introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Rick Kralowski again, one of the rare instances of actually supporting something from Ms. Cowan. I think this is a no-brainer. I walk by there all the time. That sign would be an absolute great improvement to that corner. It'll fit into the other signs and the basic overall feel of Main Street, and I hope you will just allow it to be put in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this sign variance? Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Deb Parmenter, Royal Oak citizen. I don't understand all this variance stuff, and there's a lot of terms that are being said that are kind of over my head. I just want to say that from what the gentleman stood up here and said, this is why I want to do what we want to do and whatever, as a person that wants to know how much my gas is going to cost, I'd like to see a sign that I can see. Right?
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public would like to come up and speak on this sign variance? Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Deb Parmenter, Royal Oak citizen. I don't understand all this variance stuff, and there's a lot of terms that are being said that are kind of over my head. I just want to say that from what the gentleman stood up here and said, this is why I want to do what we want to do and whatever, as a person that wants to know how much my gas is going to cost, I'd like to see a sign that I can see. Right?
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public would like to come up and speak on this sign variance? All right. Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing part of this. Come back here.
Commissioner Casado, I'd like to introduce a motion to approve sign variance 240201 as presented.
All right. Is that the second by Commissioner Douglas? Okay. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right. Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing part of this. Come back here.
Commissioner Casado, I'd like to introduce a motion to approve sign variance 240201 as presented.
All right. Is that the second by Commissioner Douglas? Okay. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right. Seeing none. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.[1653.16]
variance? All right, seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing part of this.
Commissioner Gassad, I'd like to introduce a motion to approve sign variance 240201 as presented.
All right, is there, is that the second by Commissioner Douglas? Okay, is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passing as is. Congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, other business, SV sign variance 240202. Mr. Murphy?
The zoo has about 1,300 feet of frontage along Ten Mile and 120 feet of frontage on Woodward Avenue. All of that is Michigan, property owned by the Michigan Department of Transportation or MDOT. It's not MDOT public right away, it's actual private property. So the sign, the zoo's signage is, is an entry, are on MDOT property. And the zoo has two signs that are monument in style, and the one at the entrance on Woodward and the one at the entrance on Ten Mile. And then they have the water tower, which has signage on it, and we regard that as a freestanding sign. They're in sign area number two, which allows for one freestanding or monument sign, and that sign can be a maximum of 16 feet in height and 42 square feet in area. So this, the total number of signage exceeds what's allowable, and so does the square footage. They're looking to reface the existing water tower with new signage, and under the city's sign ordinance, the staff can't approve a permit for refacing a non-conforming sign with the fact that there are other non-conforming signs there now. So they need to come in front of you to seek a variance in order to have the three monument signs, to have the water tower remain as a sign and in excess of the 16-foot height, and then they're seeking a variance from the total square footage associated with the water tower, which certainly exceeds 42 square feet. I think it's over 8,000 square feet. So they haven't, they haven't provided us with a graphic of what image will, images will be on the water tower. They're not required to, obviously, under some, some very strict court cases. We can't essentially judge or determine what the signage can be. So they're simply asking to have that, the ability to, to put new signage on it, and they have a reveal that they will be doing at a later point in time, so they also held back in that sense.
All right, speaking?
Just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so, so this has come before us because you're not allowed in the staff to approve for the reasons you just stated, and all three of these items that currently have signs, or the water tower has its sign erased for the moment, are going to stay the same size and dimensions that they currently are, they're just going to be updated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'll make the comment that because the water tower is something that's kind of a iconic feature, that in my opinion, it doesn't really fall into the site ordinance, but I understand why it does, and so I hope it gets painted cute again.
All right, other questions for Mr. Murphy? All right, well, let's call the petitioner up. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you're seeking.
Good evening, my name is Amelia Hale, and I'm the chief of staff of the Detroit Zoological Society, and this is my colleague Kim Wadi, our director of marketing. We appreciate you hearing our petition today. As you can imagine, the Detroit Zoological Society is celebrating our 95th year. We've been seeking to really commemorate that and also preserve some of the aspects of the zoo that are the most iconic to the community, one of those obviously being the water tower. When we first started looking at the water tower last year, it was in need of a great deal of restoration, which provided us with an opportunity for the paint refresh that you see, but we know that people are also really eagerly awaiting a new design and a refresh on the water tower overall. We are, you know, as stated, we are not seeking to change the number of signs on grounds or the size of the signage from what it is right now. We're simply conducting some restoration and refresh to that. We're very excitedly planning for a public reveal a little bit later this spring where we'll be able to unveil the design for the community in a celebration.
All right, Mr. Ellison?
I'm excited. I always get excited when they change the zoo tower. A question for you though, are there, does the design include any additional lighting?
No, the lighting will remain as is.
And you're going to change the two LED bulbs or whatever, no, you're just going to light with the lights you've got?
No, yes, we are remaining with the lights that we have.
Okay. So you're a brighter lighting guy.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner? I have one. Is, my recollection is that the sign, previous sign was only on the barrel part above, like the little, you know, catwalk there. Is, is the new sign going to be anywhere else, or is it going to be the same surface area?
The new sign will be the exact same surface area around the barrel. The top hat was painted previously, and that will also be painted again in, in the new design as well.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the petitioner? All right, if you want to have a seat, and we'll ask if anybody, does somebody want to make a motion to have a public hearing on this?
I don't think we need a motion.
You don't, you don't think you want one? The director says I can just go ahead. So is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this sign variance for the zoo? If so, come on up. All right, we'll close the public, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to Mr. Ellison.
Yeah, to me, it's a no-brainer. I'm going to make the motion to approve the sign variances as requested, and I'd like to make a comment.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
A second, I think, I think in the second there. Okay, go ahead.
We are in a, excuse me, we are in a, let me turn this back on. We are in a unique position. We've got an internationally renowned zoo on the corner, on one of our main corners of our city, and we have looked at the water tower for decades. It's was part of the original part of the city, it's always been there. The signs have been there for probably at least two decades, and, and so we're not changing anything other than making it more attractive and updating it. And, and because of the way our ordinance is written, and it's probably a good thing, we've got to come here and give them permission to do what they've been doing for years. So that's why I think that the motion is, is really, it's a no-brainer. Let's just give them the opportunity to do it.
All right, speaking?
I'm, I'm going to be supporting this motion, but I'd also like to take advantage of some of the zoo staff and board members being present. Royal Oak and the surrounding communities are walkable communities, and our zoo is a feature here in our community, and it's quite difficult to access a zoo if you're not in a vehicle. And I just really encourage you to cooperate with the cities around you about improving cross-suitings and also help lobby for those kinds of things, because you have a lot of people, a lot of people surrounded, surrounding the area who could easily walk there, but it's quite frightening to do so. And then also, for people who are interested in that, MDOT is taking comments on their complete street policy through February 29th, and we need both households, individuals, as well as institutions to please express to them that we want our streets like Woodward and other state-managed streets to be accessible for people who might be pushing a stroller or coming by wheelchair or just want to cross the street. So I'd appreciate support on that, and I'll support the sign, but it's not a quote-unquote.
All right, Mr. Douglas?
I just like the idea of voting to waive 8,098 feet on a sign, that's got to be a record. Okay, okay.
All right, any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the sign variance, moved by Mr. Ellison, seconded by Mr. Esprit. Further discussion?
It doesn't matter.
Oh, I thought he was first.
We are.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Congratulations, motion passes. Go make it look pretty.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have now moved the capital improvement program to this spot on the agenda. Mr. Murphy?
I'll give a brief introduction. Because the city has a master plan, by the state planning-enabling legislation, we're required to create a capital improvements plan each year. And that is to align the physical infrastructure improvements that we have planned or need. It aligns, supposed to align with the master plan's goals and objectives. And so we have with us tonight City's Finance Director to provide an overview of the CIP, and after that overview and discussion and the public hearing, there is a suggested motion for you. If the motion is to modify, if there's additional motion to modify elements of the CIP, we should be precise and of course have a collective vote to accept those additional comments to be inserted into the CIP as revisions.
All right, so we are going to turn to our Finance Director. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm glad to be with you this evening. Joseph provided a good summary of the capital improvement plan. It is a multi-year planning tool. It is our way of bridging the planning for the city's infrastructure with the budgeting and financing of those projects. This draft of the capital improvement plan includes projects with a value of over $203 million. There is a cost-sharing portion included of approximately $12 million, so it represents $191 million of requests spread over the next six years. To be clear, some of these items may be funded in the budget, some of them may be delayed, but this is our starting point as we move through the process. As we are beginning, the initial request for funding is approximately $43 million for the next fiscal year. That compares to the current year budget that was funded in the amount of $28.6 million. So the goal is to ensure that we are able to maintain, preserve, and protect the city's investment in their infrastructure. This is, as was earlier stated, a tool that helps guide the, the vision of the master plan and ensure that we are aligned with that plan as we're moving forward. We also, as a city, have implemented a number of other plans that work in conjunction with the master plan, including the strategic plan, the sustainability and climate action plan, the aging-in-place study, parks' master plan, and there, there are others as well. To be clear on what the role of the Planning Commission is this evening, the Planning Commission provides affirmation and agreement that the proposed projects contained in the plan are a reasonable interpretation of the upcoming needs and wants of the city, and that they comply with the master plan. That's the first step in the process. Tonight, and your approval of this plan does not signify the final approval or go ahead for any of these projects, nor does it provide the funding. That portion occurs later in the budget process that we are moving through concurrently this time of year. This year, we started the process last year of developing a more comprehensive report. We continue to work towards incorporating aspects of the various plans within the submissions that are made by each of the city's departments. We've implemented the OpenGov database solution that allows us to compile the information for this plan in a more complete way, and to keep some of the key factors at the forefront of the, the planning process as our departments are submitting those requests. With that, I have two adjustments that, that we have noted that need to be made since you received this version of the, the plan. The first would be, there is a duplicate entry. CIP number 2024-21 and 2025-18 are both for repaving of the Salter Center parking lot in the amount of $400,000. CIP item 2024-21 should be eliminated. That is a duplication. And the second item, it was pointed out that on the list of documents, we failed to include the sustainability and climate action plan on page one and two of the document, so I would intend to add that notation as a correction on the document. So those are the two items that I have, and I'm happy to entertain any questions related to the plan itself.
All right, does the commissioners have any questions for the director? Mr. Gentino?
Just a couple of quick questions. In the, the out-years of the city facility's spending, can you speak to the reduction in spending in the out-years? Is it mainly just projects haven't been identified, or is there some anticipated savings that is being demonstrated by that reduction in spending?
It is primarily that there are projects that we are in the process of identifying. We are looking to do a full facilities assessment, and we created over the last two years a position for a facilities manager. So we are taking a more coordinated approach to some of those improvements to the city's facilities, and I would foresee some of those items being fleshed out and added to the plan as we move forward with that assessment.
All right, and then the, sort of the same question in reverse with regards to the park spending. It looks like there's some pretty increased spending in some of the out-years. Is that really due to the anticipated spending on some major projects that are just going to be happening several years down the line, or can you speak to that sort of trend?
So the city has a, a larger-than,-than-average inventory of parks, and there are a lot of improvements that, that could be made in those facilities. What I anticipate is that many of those items that are on the list are included because they are improvements that the city would like to see happen, but some of them will not happen unless grant funding can be secured or we can find other sources of revenue that really amplify the impact of each city dollar. We like to have them on the inventory of projects that may occur, so that when those grant opportunities present themselves, we're in a position to be ready to react with a meaningful plan. So that would be my response, that I would anticipate that some of those items that are in the out-years would actually be reduced by grant funding and other collaborations.
All right, and then lastly, with respect to the fleet vehicles, does what's being shown here take into account any conversion of the fleet vehicles to EVs and any reduction in maintenance or fuel cost savings related to that?
So it's the intent of the city to move towards electrified vehicles in a way that we are able to support with our infrastructure. So we are currently in the process of identifying locations for charging stations, including here at City Hall, as well as at the Department of Public Works. And there's also discussion about the police station in other locations through the city. As we develop that infrastructure and have the ability for charging, it is a high priority to be replacing fossil-fuel vehicles with electric vehicles whenever possible. We've made a more concerted effort as the requests for purchases are being brought to the city commission to address that question each and every time, so that it is clear that it is in our forefront. We are working towards that as a goal. I cannot provide you with the exact timeline of when the first charging stations are to be implemented, but it is in process, and it is my belief that you will start seeing that, those types of vehicles being added to the fleet.
But as far as the, the CIP budgeting and sort of what's being accounted for in these out-years, it doesn't necessarily take into account that conversion to EVs just yet. This is simply based on, it's such a current state of affairs and not converting anything the way it's being shown.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Ellison?
And the improvements to the parks have, the designers are, however they're going to implement the plan, done it with an eye towards reducing maintenance costs, and I'm thinking of contouring the parks so we have swales, we have water collection areas, so that we could get rid of the mass ponding we have through our parks and try to get it isolated. So I'm assuming and hoping that the design of the parks would include all that, and that's all covered in here.
Yes, so the, the plan itself is So the plan itself is, I would say, the skeleton of those projects. And as each of those projects is being developed and the RFPs are being let out for bidders to potentially do the work, there are questions relating to sustainability. It's being built into the design. It's part of every conversation that we have. One of the additions that we have made during this last year is adding a sustainability manager to our staff, and Angela Fox is part of the conversation. She is reviewing requests for proposal on items like that. She has a sustainability, a procurement background with sustainability, and she's been a huge asset to make sure that those types of questions are being asked before the projects begin.
Other questions for the director? Mr. Gentino.
I have a quick question for you with respect to the non-motorized plan. I've had a few residents express a little bit of frustration around how, in their view, the non-motorized master plan hasn't been implemented very well. I think this document does a great job of showing how some of the CIP projects tie back to the strategic goal alignment, and you certainly reference all the various plans that go into helping to form the CIP. Can you maybe speak to how it might be easier for a resident, or for anyone for that matter, to get a better idea, I'm speaking strictly to the non-motorized, but certainly there's other plans, to get an idea of how these projects may have been influenced by these other plans or tie back to these other plans? In parts of the document that give a little bit more detailed description of each of the projects, is there the possibility of including it in there without necessarily having to create another graph to show which additional document ties back to? Hopefully that question made sense, because I think, certainly I think that, again, speaking specifically to the non-motorized plan, many of these projects are influenced by all these other plans, but it may not be readily apparent. If there's a way to try to demonstrate that a little bit more clearly, I think that'd be really helpful for everybody.
I appreciate that comment, and those are the types of comments that are helping us to enhance the plan and to help it address so many more things. One of our goals, because we are limited, to some extent, as we're compiling it into a document, on the amount of data points that are there. As we are moving forward with the OpenGov tool that we've recently implemented, it's our hope that it will allow us more flexibility in adding much more of those types of, you know, more flavor to the descriptions and provide more of those specific details of how we intend to implement those projects and not just have the simple description. So I appreciate that feedback.
All right. Any other questions for the director? Okay, I think it's time for open the public hearing on this. So we are opening the public hearing. If there's members of the public who'd like to come up and speak on the capital improvements program for 2024, 2025, please come on up, introduce yourself, get three minutes.
One thing I noticed was not in the CIP was handicapped doors in the parking structures. We already authorized four doors in the library parking lot on the main floor only, but to my knowledge, none of the other parking structures have it. There's a line item for doing an assessment of parking structures, but we know we need these doors put in, so I would like to see a line item to start implementing, putting those in, a few a year, hopefully. I think it's a violation of ADA to not have them. Dickinson Park is listed as $700,000 in the CIP, and what was just brought before, the city commission was $373,700, so I think that's incorrect. Clausen Park is listed as $750,000, but the CDBG document says it's only $600,000, so I don't know if that's, which one's right. The animal shelter was listed at $1.25 million with, what was it, $1.1, I think, or $1 million coming from the federal government? And now it's listed as $2 million, so that's an increase of $750,000. I don't know where that's going to come from, because ARPA, we're running out of money in that. And Farmer's Market bathrooms was listed as $750,000 last year, now it's up to $1 million. Again, that'll come out of ARPA. I don't know if we've got enough money or we need to shuffle where the funding's coming from. And because it's depleting a lot of ARPA, I'd like to see the solar roof for the library be switched into the library funding, because there's definitely an overage there once we did the Headley override on that millage. And finally, the CAP 2450, the aerial flyover for impervious mapping, I'm pretty sure that's tied to what we had for stormwater utility fee program that we were doing, that we already spent $250,000 on, and it's not legal yet, so we've sidelined it. So I'd like to see that moved out in case it never happens, hopefully. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Over here.
My name is Trish Oliver. I've been a resident for almost 40 years. This capital improvement plan contains extraordinarily large expenditures, and we don't see any reference to the special workshop meeting that the city commission conducted last month that outlined a financial crisis. My opinion about that financial plan document presented by...
Hold on a second. Sorry.
My opinion about that financial plan document presented by your new city manager is that it's the equivalent of a report card measuring the status of the city commission's financial policies. The city commission receives an F for putting us in this financial predicament. Now we have a capital improvement plan that doesn't reference how any of these items will be paid for. This is a public hearing. How can anyone from the public intelligently comment on a capital improvement plan without the plan referencing the current financial crisis? So in looking around the room, I see a very low turnout on this important issue. My opinion is that I also give you an F for your transparency policies and your public notice policies. This is a document that should be receiving more public attention, and you seem to be avoiding that. I recommend adjourning this item and postponing any discussion until a later date, until you can figure out how to notify the public with more information so that they can make intelligent public comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else in the room here who'd like to come up and speak on the capital improvement All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the side of the table and see if the commissioners have further discussion. Questions for the director? Questions for Mr. Murphy? Speak.
I have a question for the director. Thank you for acknowledging you're going to add the sustainability and climate action plan into the list of plans to which this document corresponds. The sustainability goals and some of those things that are outlined are supposed to permeate the document, as well as the capital expenditures that we would make, both on materials acquisition as well as things like native plants and Vision Zero in terms of some of the street safety that relate to the non-motorized plan, as well as how the streets are designed in terms of speed limits. Can you talk a little bit about, and I know it was left off of here, which concerns me because I brought it up last year that was left off, how staff go about making sure that when they make these decisions, they're actually starting to bring that lens to bear? And I understand now we have a staff person which is going to help some. And similarly, in the RFPs, is there a rumor, are we working towards being more specific about the kind of materials we procure, the kind of things we allow? Because if we, we know that a lot of the greenhouse gases come through hard surfaces. We know that hard surfaces hurt tree roots, so there has to be some kind of judgment call there. And then some of the materials used for even just simple things like reinstalling grass, like I saw in the Waterworks Park, we have a lot of nylon and plastic webbing that's been left there permanently, which is not good for water quality or things like, or animals in the park and that sort of thing. So if you could talk to how that thing, how they relate?
So I will respond from my part of the world, which would be the procurement aspect of the projects. And one of the items that we are also working towards, we are looking at ways to help, have technology help us not to overlook some of those things. So we are developing new templates for our request for proposals that really require our departments, when they are developing those, to address issues of sustainability to specifically, it pops up and discusses what issues are there in this project that have sustainability components to make sure that that is being built in whenever possible. I can't speak to the engineering side, but I will share my observations that as the projects are being brought to the city commission, more emphasis is on ensuring that those factors are addressed, that, you know, when a contract or a plan is submitted for final approval, that those aspects have been addressed. So, you know, together, there is significant conversations surrounding it. There is definitely a more significant awareness of the need to be at the forefront and be more proactive with those items.
And just one more follow-up, and maybe you're addressing it in a similar way. Impact on operating budget often says in here, just lower system maintenance costs. And I understand the relationship between the capital and operating budget, and I understand we still have a simple line item in budget, we don't have a priority-based budget, which makes it a little bit harder to unify, and I hope at some point we go to priority-based, at least, if not program-based. But when I hear something of lower system maintenance costs, without any qualification that you're going to retain the quality, you're going to improve the quality, making lower costs might mean doing a worse job, depending on how we manage our contracts and staff and such. And so I just wondered if that's another area you're going to be working on improving, because I flagged this a few different times, and it still seems to be staying as the same plugin of not really saying anything qualitative about the quality of the work.
And I do appreciate that feedback as well. Our goal is to be continually improving the process, and I think that that is a very valid comment for you to make, and I will share that along with some of the other comments that you've shared with the team to make sure that we are providing much more complete responses.
All right. Other, Mr. Ellison.
I'll just make a quick, share a quick anecdote relative to both of your points. At last night's city commission meeting, we approved the purchase of motorcycles. The police department uses motorcycles, and up until now, they've used BMW motorcycles. Now they're switching to Harley-Davidson motorcycles. The reason being, I mean, they're equivalent in terms of their function, but in order to change the clutch on a BMW, you have to take the whole thing apart. You have to send it to a dealership, take the whole thing apart. Whereas in order to change the clutch on a Harley-Davidson, they can do it over at the public works yard. So yes, I think our professional staff, our leadership are balancing the need for reducing maintenance costs while maintaining the quality of the product.
Mr. Ellison.
I simply want to clarify what I said before about when we're in the park, making sure we're contouring the ground or something for drainage. I didn't mean that expense of putting in amenities to the park. I mean, the purpose is to go in there and make the park better, like we've done with many of our other parks. The only point I'm trying to make is we constantly, every spring, have problems with getting the mowers out there because the ground is so soft and they can't cut the grass. My question simply had to do with, are we looking at those problems at those particular parks and contouring the ground so that we have a more positive drainage, which will help get the maintenance, but it would save on maintenance costs if we're not delaying cutting the grass because of water? I just want to make sure that we've got an eye for that in there. I did notice that there is a line item on there also about park drainage. So it's got its own separate line items, but if we're going to be in the parks doing grading and stuff like that, it would make sense just to grade it so water runs downhill.
All right. Other questions for the director? I have a quick question. You said there were two revisions that appeared to be typos. One was the duplicated Salter parking lot, and then I forgot to write down the other one.
And the second item was adding the sustainability and capital, or and climate action plan to the list of documents included on page one and two.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Mr. Murphy, what I understand here is that the, this is going to go to the city commission, but this panel would approve and recommend, and you've given us a resolution here at the bottom of the, right up here. That's, that is our, that is our task tonight, to either, to vote on that, to resolve, to approve or otherwise.
No, that's correct. And staff had noted the corrections. I don't, I don't believe it needs to be included in a motion that you make, since staff has every intention of doing that, and they've expressed that to you, and you've acknowledged that it's an appropriate thing to do. I don't think it needs to be incorporated into your motion, a motion that's, that's made.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have a discussion or a motion on the proposed resolution or some other resolution? Mr. Ellison.
In reviewing the cover letter that came with this item, it says the annual budget schedule may allow a recommendation of the program to be postponed until the next regular meeting. Should the planning commission recommend any revisions following the public hearing, these changes can either be included with a motion recommending adoption of the program by the city commission, or revised draft of the program can be reviewed at the next regular meeting. That's the question I'm raising. Are we ready to send this forward with the few corrections we've, we put in it? Or do we want to hold it off to our next meeting and recommend it with, after, you know, a month-long review and answer some more questions? I'm just a little hesitant to put it through, because we, I've just seen this, this just came in my, you know, the packet last week. So haven't had a chance to read it. There's very valid questions about, you know, we've got a lot of stuff in there, and I know that the CIP normally has a wish list. In a perfect world, this is what we'd like to do. And then, so you put your plan out there, that's the target, and then the goal is to find the budget. You don't put the budget out there and design the program into the budget. It's got to define the program and then make the budget work. If the budget doesn't work, you reduce the program. But I'm not sure if we're ready to send this forward yet. That's my opinion.
The mayor had a comment there.
Yeah, and I think those are all fair points. I would just, you know, note that there's a lot of items in here, and it's a plan, like our finance director said to us. I mean, any number of these things could be changed and worked as, you know, time goes on, depending on budget, as Mr. Ellison mentioned, as well as, you know, if there are shifting priorities.
Is this better?
People do want to listen to what I have to say. That's amazing. Thank you. I apologize. My kids say I talk too loud at home, so it's a good thing I don't have a mic there. So there are, you know, to go through every single one of these items and try to critique it, I mean, staff is, what they're doing is basically saying, okay, there's a plan out there to fix roads. out there to fix roads, improve parks, we're taking cues from the overall vision of the community. I think what's helpful from the planning commission is if we, you know, if there's anything in here that sticks out, that just totally doesn't seem like something that's the purview of the business of the city, yeah, we should critique it and point it out and provide that feedback back to the city commission. I'd also add, if there are general guidelines that we want to put into a resolution here to say that, hey, you know, we're doing the procedural thing here as dictated by state law, but, you know, we encourage and recommend the city commission continue to make sure that, you know, that all projects, you know, that take an eye towards sustainability as an example, to make sure that, you know, these projects meet requirements to improve the quality of life in our parks, the drainage. And that gets really complicated, because some of these deal with road projects, and we get grants and all of that. But I don't know, like, a line item by line item review of, it's got to be a couple hundred here?
Yes.
Yes. You know, I don't know that this body would, you know, even the city commission would be able to manage it. What we're trying to do is say, look, there's things we got to do, there's things that we know we have to fix, improve, there's things that are on schedule, things need maintenance, they need repair, whatever. We know that we have some strategic planning that we've done and committed to, to do certain things. And so here's just sort of this list, but I can tell you and guarantee, and you guys have all seen it, anything that comes before us or comes before the city commission, we bird dog it, ask the questions, make sure there's the budget, and then decide, you know, is it, should we do it, should we not do it, should we do part of it, is it a bum deal? Is it something that, you know, staff has proposed that isn't living up to what we see as a vision for the city? A lot of that real work happens, but having that radar out there to say, yeah, these are the things that a city should do. We need to fix roads, we need to improve parks, we need, I mean, people live here. This is the place where we live, you know? It's not a place that we just go in our house, sit on the couch, and scroll social media all day. It's a place that people live, and, you know, are these basic elements, things that seem, you know, relatable and important to the residents of Royal Oak, doesn't mean they're all going to get done, just means that they should be on the radar, holding those dollars so we know how to save, plan, and manage accordingly. But if there's something in here, like any individual thing that you're like, that seems crazy, why are we building a statue to honor Jim Ellison that's going to be 40-foot tall? You know, we might, we might want to make it 30-foot tall, compromise.
All right, other, wait, what he was next.
No, I was going to say that, again, I, I think this is my fifth or sixth time reviewing the capital improvement plan, and it's getting better. But again, from, from the perspective of the fact that that sustainable climate action plan was approved, you know, more than a year ago, and I have made very similar comments last year, I'm seeing in the substance of some of these areas, there is not a cross-referencing to those things. And so I'm still not comfortable with the quality of this, and if a month would make a difference to take in some of those points in consideration, I would appreciate seeing an improvement, because that's the second time I spent, well, this is the fifth time I spent three or four hours reading through it. And similarly, at some juncture, I'd like to see maybe an invitation to the planning commission at an earlier point in the process, maybe meeting with staff, if it's a short meeting, to bring some of these things up or help with that cross-referencing, if that would, the help, rather than waiting till this late date within the process. So to Mr. Ellison's point, if there's some improvements that could be made, that wouldn't be too harsh on the staffing burden, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Otherwise, I'm still, this is still not coming up to the quality that I would expect for the CIP.
All right, what he, Dina was next.
So I share similar concerns around timeline. I'm still not really comfortable with the amount of time that we have to look at this, understanding that the expectation isn't necessarily for the planning commission to do a line-by-line review or approval of the projects that are on here. However, there is a vast amount of information here, and to be able to go through the information to at least pick up on any trends that we may see in terms of, we would like the information to, you know, be presented in X, Y, Z way, in a better way. I don't feel comfortable that I've had enough time to look at the full document to develop those, you know, responses either. However, the timeline that's laid out in the document in terms of what need, the steps that need to occur after our action, I have concerns around whether if we do move this to next month's meeting, we take no action today. It doesn't seem like there's enough time in the overall timeline that allows for that. And I think this issue's come up in past years, where the, that concern around the amount of time that we have as the planning commission to look at this document and provide feedback, understanding we're not necessarily approving projects, is a little bit inadequate, at least, I'll speak for me personally, but I know others have expressed it. I'm not comfortable that I've had enough time with the document to be able to give, you know, relevant feedback to improve the document going forward, or to do the job that we're tasked with in terms of what the planning commission's being asked to do in terms of its resolution with this document. So I share the same concerns around timing and wanting enough time to review the document in full.
Now, there was another hand up here.
Well, I was going to make a motion, but if there's additional comment, I was just going to wait it out.
All right, I, I'm going to make a comment, I'm actually going to ask a question here. So one of the things that I was interested in when I saw this was, you must have interfaced with the community development department, and then you have a blurb here at the end of page three that talks about how your department developed this plan. And I think it would probably behoove us to, on the record, give us a little synopsis of that, probably would help this panel, too. What do you do to get here? You're not sitting in your office coming up with this stuff, you're reaching out to the different departments of what it says here.
Yes, so the finance department compiles the information that's provided by those members of the staff that are closest to the projects. So city engineering, department of public works, community development, any, any department that is looking to add improvements on the plan are, they are the starting point and the resource that is providing the primary information related to the request. And once it is submitted, we review it in finance for completion and reasonability, and it's reviewed overall to ensure that it is fitting with the direction that city leadership has been charged with. So you are 100% correct. I do not sit and come up with the plans, I don't drive through the city and, and come up with them myself. It is a very collaborative effort. And it really, the process with the departments begins late in the fall and develops as it formulates into this document that comes to you.
A little quick follow-up question, the spreadsheets that are on page 19 through 23, are those, again, for the record, are those prioritized? What, how are those put together? Does this reflect the priorities that you, that your department is getting from the other departments?
So the way that they are organized here is, is really by CIP number and the year that they are intended to be complete. What will happen as we move into the next phase, those projects will then be prioritized for the recommendation for funding and the ultimate slotting in of aligning the finances with the completion of the projects.
All right, so this document doesn't reflect priorities, that comes later.
Correct.
All right, Mr. Cantina.
I just wanted to clarify my comments before around concerns just a little bit, because they certainly are not about the finance department or the director's work output. I think the document itself actually is, for me anyways, is quite informative, I think it's laid out quite well. Obviously, there's quite a bit of effort and work that went into this. And I do believe it's an improvement over past year's documents in terms of being more explanatory and providing a little bit more detail to help us understand. My comments are really merely on the process by which this comes to us as the planning commission and the expectations that are placed in the planning commission in terms of what we're supposed to do with it. So I just want to make sure that my comments were clear, that it's not a commentary on the work itself or the department's work.
All right, other questions or comments or a motion, I know is one of the things we need to do here. So, Mr. Esbry, oh, you do, we'll go with Commissioner Douglas first.
So as I look at this, 60% of the expenditures anticipated in this plan are water and sewer, major streets, local streets, and sidewalks. And, I mean, those are the essential things that make our city run. And it's a priority, as we've looked at the master plan and asked people what our priorities should be, they emphasize infrastructure above all else. So I feel that, you know, we here are addressing, you know, top-level, broad, as a skeleton, as Ms. Lichtenberg has said, plan, financial plan for the city. And as we funnel down into the actual implementation of that, city departments and ultimately the city commission have a say over the finer details of that. I am satisfied that this plan is the right guidepost to help our staff make decisions based on available funding, because of course, if you look at, you know, major roads, there's priorities will be set within the funding that is available in fixed categories. And I am satisfied with the, I think, very high-level work that's been done by our professional staff, by our department heads, in putting this together, and don't feel like I have the knowledge at this level to second-guess what's been offered. But certainly, when this comes to, you know, a purchase agreement at the city commission table, I and my fellow, the mayor and a fellow commissioners, will certainly evaluate those decisions based on the strategic plan that we have a commission has agreed with. So I am going to, unless, I'm going to move in favor of the resolution of blessing this plan and sending it to the city commission.
Okay, I'm not 100% clear, was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, Clyde's turn.
And I will second it, and if Sher has any follow-up comments to her motion, then I'll make a couple of comments.
Already did.
All right, so to follow up on what Ms. Douglas had to say, I mean, I think we've hit on a couple of key points here, why I'm comfortable to support this motion. I apologize. You know, I think this body, we really should be looking at this, you know, more from a 10,000-foot view, 10,000-foot view, and the most important role that I think this body has tonight is to make sure that we are, in fact, in compliance with Public Act 33. Secondarily, this plan is always evolving and being reviewed by professional staff who are able to review things in a way that, I know I don't have the professional expertise to do so, and I shouldn't pretend to try and do so on TV. But more importantly, when it's all said and done, we also have several elected officials who will be fly-specting the final product and will be making decisions as it pertains to the budget that they have to adopt. So with all those things being the case, I'm very comfortable supporting it.
All right, other comments? All right, I'm not seeing any hands, the motion is on the table. Let me clarify, your motion, is your motion to adopt the resolution as stated, be it resolved that the planning commission approves capital improvement program for the 2024, 2025 physical year as presented, and recommends it's adopted by the city commission as part of the 24, 25 physical year budget? Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, second by Mr. Esbry. And Ms. Bickie.
I was making further comment, but I do appreciate the progress that's being made, and I appreciate the statement that, again, the capital improvement plan is very important also for securing funding and getting grants and such. And I look forward to it evolving more and becoming more expressly connected to these various plans, and especially on sustainability. Anyway, I just wanted to make that comment.
All right, Mr. Cantina.
I guess I just wanted to maybe thank Commissioner Douglas and Mr. Esbry for convincing me otherwise of what I was thinking, because it did make me go back to a particular sentence in here, which is, "The planning commission acknowledges that they agree that the projects present a reasonable interpretation of the upcoming needs and wants for the city and comply with the city's master plan." It's not necessarily asking us to weigh in on the quality of the projects in there. I do agree that while there may be some improvements that we could talk about in terms of how the CIP process and the projects go in there, or maybe viewed through a different lens in the future, in terms of what this body is asked to do, I think it does actually give us a reasonable interpretation of the city's needs and sort of is in line with the master plan. Do I think it's perfect and addresses all of our needs? Nope, but that's not really what this process is about or what we're asked to do. So prior to the discussion, and so I'm glad that's why we have these discussions, I probably would not have been in favor of the motion, but listening to you, it's the beauty of debate, it convinced me, and as I read this, I'm a little bit more comfortable with moving it forward, because I also don't want to be an impediment to the process either.
All right, any other comments? Mr. Ellison.
Yeah, I will not be supporting the motion for comments I made before. It's not a bad plan, I think it could be a better plan. I just want to spend some more time looking at it. The cover letter, as I read, said, "We can take that time, it's not going to hurt the budget process." So we can take that time, if it's being offered to us, let's take it and look at it, gives the public a little bit more time to look at it as well, they can come back and talk to us next month when it comes in front of us. But I just, personally, I'm not ready for it yet. It's a good plan, nothing wrong with anything it did, but I just want to make sure we've got, we can make a good plan better.
All right, any other comments? Or are we ready to vote? I think we are. If I don't see any more hands up. So, the motion is on the table by Commissioner Douglas to adopt the resolution, seconded by Mr. Esbry, and I'm going to call for the voice vote. All, well, maybe I shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't do a roll call vote here. I want to do a roll call vote, let's start down there.
Uh, no.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, yes. So what is the, what is that? That's five to two. Okay, motion passes. All right, very good. It's on its way to the city commission. All right. Very good. Next, review of chapter four, do we have our master plan?
Let's see if through the magic of technology, we can bring them in. While we're waiting, I'll, well, okay, well, and I'll do a little, I'll do a little interduction before we turn it over to Matt from DPZ.
All right, please do.
At your September meeting, you adopted a motion to direct staff to create and to distribute a survey based on DPZ's suggest document, the suggested direction forward for the master plan. And the intent of that survey, the second survey, was to see the public's opinion on the suggested direction forward. They had access to the document, so they took the survey, and in advance of the survey, we created an awareness campaign regarding the master plan. We detailed that in the memorandum. And the survey was open from early November through the end of the calendar year. So DPZ can provide a brief overview of the survey, and they've developed a draft version of the chapter on how we might provide more housing options. And we're going to review and discuss that tonight. They've outlined possible chapters for the document, which they suggested to review at one per month, one per month, and the chapters will then be, we'll say, assembled into the first draft. So this is a draft chapter on one, a draft of one particular chapter for your review and comment tonight. And with that, if you, unless you have any questions from me, I think it would be wise to hear from Matt.
All right, any questions for Mr. Murphy? All right, hearing none. I don't know if Matt can hear me, but I'm going to turn it over to you, and tell us about what you've given us here.
All right, great. So we'll have a few items to discuss in here, so I'll pause at a couple of points. But I have the survey and then the draft of this particular chapter, and we can talk, there's some specific questions in terms of how it is assembled, contents, and review timeline. But first, first for the survey, we have most of the questions on here, so just looking at participants broadly. we have most of the questions on here. So just looking at participants broadly spread out around the community, as we've seen before, a lot of representation of folks around for over 15 years, a pretty big split in age, as typically you don't get a lot in the, in the under 18 or 18 to 24, but you can see other age groups are, are pretty well divided up. The thing that was pointed out by Joseph in the packet is that there were about 65% of people were reached who had not interacted with the master plan process.
Hey, Matt, we don't hear you.
I see the cursor. Oh, you can't hear me?
Now I can hear you.
Just barely. Did you, did you get any of that?
No.
Well, we got some of it, yeah.
But you disappeared there for about 20 seconds or so.
Okay, okay. Well, then I'll, I will move and start over again. Apologies for that. All right. So essentially, I was sharing, the, the participants are spread out throughout the community, a lot of folks that have been around for a long time, pretty good distribution in terms of the, of the age of respondents. But pointing out in particular that this did reach 65% of people who hadn't actually interacted at all with the master plan process previously. As you can see, still nearly 30 people took the, the first survey, so that was part of the campaign to, to get a lot of outreach. Overall, we asked a number of questions in terms of the top left is, is to what extent is their support. And so, green, green to red, you know, green being in full support and red being in opposition. And, you know, essentially, the, the support being a little over, you know, 50% before you get to neutral. Of course, it's not voting, but this is taking, taking a poll of people's opinions. Then we asked about some specific issues, addressing aging, aging in place sufficiently. You know, most people sort of neutral, but, but split in terms of, of if we're doing enough. And we'll talk about that when we get into specific sections. Addressing housing costs, you know, a lot of people saying, "No, no, not, not sufficiently." And I think we'll talk a lot about that today. And then issues related to climate, you can see a similar pattern. We asked a couple of questions on regulations that we talked about in terms of making development more predictable through codes. There, there is this gray box where we, we asked if people had sufficient information. I think that gets to some earlier commentary from you all in terms of having some more plain language and clarity. And so we have some questions on the first chapter draft about that. Same thing here in terms of, of regulations being adjusted to better reflect the character of existing buildings and neighborhoods. So you see a lot of, a lot of support for that. Interestingly, comments are, are, are pretty, pretty split on some of these. But here is questions about getting around. So the, the first one about that sort of low-stress greenway for pedestrians and bicyclists avoiding major, major roads and connecting schools, parks, and retail destinations. So a pretty strong level of, of support there. More frequent pedestrian and bicycle crosswalks with signals at major, at major roads. So that, that one was, you know, a little, little bit less, less supportive, but still more in support than not of, of those who, who we asked. And this does tie closely with, with the one above. We did ask about lanes on streets, so we asked about road diets, and this was, this was about split in terms of, in terms of people's, people's opinions on that. In the open-ended comments, there were a lot of opinions on that, actually on, on both sides. So it's interesting that that was a pretty big split, that we look at the other goals that, that accomplishes. And then, you know, as was brought up before, in terms of asking about Woodward, there's a lot of stress right now with, with 75 construction and, and a lot of people think, hey, we shouldn't mess with it because, because of traffic. Though there are plenty of other comments that talk about beautification and the need to, to activate the, the aging storefronts that are there. And so there's a bit of a conflict on your ability to do so. We asked a number of questions about placemaking. This is where there might be change or where change was proposed. So we asked about the proposals in the Delamere industrial area for change. You can see here at Campbell and 12. Here we were asking about updating and adding mixed uses to the, to the smaller commercial areas that exist on main streets throughout town. That's a strategy related to providing more walkable access to, to, to services and activities for people in the community. And then the question on, on, on looking at the Amtrak stop and redeveloping that. And then lastly, questions around housing. So this first one is if housing should be focused in downtown industrial areas, busier roadways and so forth, rather than within the established single-family neighborhoods. And there was a lot of support on that side. Again, we had asked this, you know, are we adequately addressing costs? So I think we'll talk about that when we review the section. We asked as well to provide more housing supply, what sorts of activities would be supported. And for, for the most part, it's, it's related to the infill of townhouses and multifamily in prior industrial areas, commercial areas, and major roads over, over all sorts of other strategies. And we did ask the, the ADU question specifically about accessory dwelling units. And there's, the, the biggest green is, is citywide, like everywhere, that's about 30%. The bigger red is about 25%, not, not allowed at all. And then the answers beyond that are, are split, most residential areas, limited residential areas, or, or commercial overall. So that was surprisingly more in support than we had thought. So I'll just pause on the, on the survey. If you all have any questions or discussion that you want to touch on, on any of those items.
I think there was somewhere that noted that there were some other comments, like people could fill in. Will we get that list as well?
Yeah, yeah, that can be provided. It was, I think there were about 1,400.
Thanks.
Was there about 1,400 written, writing comments? Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I got two questions. You reviewed a lot of questions and numbers there. We do this for Royal Oak, which is a singular city. You have done this for a number of communities throughout the nation. What is your, if you had to summarize with three takeaway points, what would those take, simple takeaway points be based on the observations that you saw in the survey, based on what you know about the participants in the survey? And do you think those participants fairly represent the population of Royal Oak? Or do you think that the survey results are biased in any way?
I would lift, one, one of the numbers, with the campaign, there were a lot more participants than, than say previously, and more than we tend to see in responding to surveys. So often you'll see somewhere in the range of 1,000 to 2,000 participants. You know, this was well over 3,000 participants. And many who hadn't interacted with the, with the project to date. So I'd say that, that portion of it is, is tending much, towards being much more representative. What we, what we do find in terms of processes like, like a master plan and planning, is that you, you tend to get a lot of overrepresentation of a few voices and not a lot of representation of a broader set of voices. When you can do a good, a good job of spreading a survey such as this one to, to more of the community, then, then you tend to see a little more balanced response, I would say, in, in terms of, in terms of the writing comments. And you'll get those. A lot of them are, are still on the sort of misinformed side of, of pushback against growing in neighborhoods. And, you know, we're trying to do what, what we can to say that, that that is, that is not where, where we're going with this. And I would say elsewhere across the, the country, this is just, it's a growing, growing issue, because there are a lot of changes that are, that are publicized, that people are hearing about, like in, in Minneapolis and elsewhere, and states that are sort of preempting local jurisdictions by requiring that zoning allow for, for missing middle housing and so forth. So, you know, I would say that this, that from a survey perspective, I guess the respondents are more representative broadly. And for the most part, it's, it's really hard for folks to, to come out, to, to engage in person in, in their busy lives, and especially with families. And so we tend to get more representation on surveys from, from that constituency. You know, in terms of, of the responses, I think the, the one that we were most interested about was seeing more support on the accessory dwelling unit side than we would have expected. That was a pretty close split, 50-50 in Birmingham. But much more, much more in support here, though of course, as you'd expect, you know, maybe not everywhere. And then on the, on the Woodward side, which really doesn't surprise me, that there was a lot of pushback against that because of the trust, the traffic issues related to I-75 being closed down. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of complexity in terms of the reasons that you would or wouldn't pursue changes. And I think when we look at transportation, we can, we can talk a lot about that. And lastly, in, in terms of what we've seen in, in comments, that would be related to, to road diets, we know people get pretty worked up about that. But, but we saw that, you know, it was closer to, to a 50-50 on that. And so that really points to balancing the, the benefits for, for where they're appropriate and where they're not. So hopefully that, that generally answered, answered your question that, yes, it tends to be more representative. This is a good turnout for, for a survey. We did learn a number of things. There's some good comments in the open-ended comments that are especially related to, say, transportation and improvements when we look at that section. And that, yes, in general, there are a number of common issues that, that people tend to focus on, you know, one being about growth and housing and where housing is built, and the other being about transportation and traffic and the frustrations that are related with that.
I guess, just as a follow-up, so, so would you say, based on what you see compared to other communities, I mean, obviously dependent on the, those who responded, that Royal Oak, at least the folks that responded to the survey, when you, when you look at everything in totality, including the comments, are they more open to, you know, making Royal Oak more walkable, more welcoming, more open to broader types of housing stock? Or would you say, compared to other communities, less?
I would say they're about on, they're about on par with a lot of other communities. I, I, I see more support on the side of, of a focus on climate and, and bikes than, than I do elsewhere. But I see also a lot of pushback on the housing growth, which is, which is pretty common. So it really depends on, on the topic, I would say. And then in housing, there's, there's a pretty strong balance between not wanting change, but being concerned about affordability. And I would say that's, that's about on par with what I see elsewhere.
Okay, so we're not an outlier in any real areas, but we do tend to lean in a couple areas.
All right, other questions before we move on with this, with our consult, oops, sorry. All right, any other questions on this before we ask Matt to move on? Okay, Matt, keep going.
Okay, great. So, so we'll look at this first draft chapter, and we can talk about the review timeline and what's going to work for you all. Also, some, some questions, I've got these enumerated at, at the end about, which is good to think about in terms of what is going to work best for you all and, and how, how you use master plan in Royal Oak. So this is written, you know, one particular way, and, and one item that we're cognizant of is the balance between, between the, the length and the necessity to provide the amount of information and background that makes it more legible to the average resident. I will note that we have, we are partially done with the glossary that Ann has called for many times. And so this will, this will be published on the website once it's together. And you can have that in, in print as well. I'm not sure how you might, may or may not want to integrate it into the master plan. But we're working on, on, on providing more clear explanations for a lot of the terminology that we see typically in planning documents, but also specifically some terminology that's used in this document as well. So I won't dwell on any, any one thing, but we have in here embedded some of the population numbers and statistics and, and such, in addition to expanding upon the, the discussions. This, this chapter on, on providing more housing options is getting to the issues of cost and affordability, but really looking heavily at what the market barriers are to, to providing housing supply. And one of the biggest of those, of course, is the, the lack of ability to, to grow by today's zoning and, and land use standards. This is suggesting changes to the, the zoning down, down the line. This document doesn't change zoning specifically, but it does identify where land uses are allowed. And so that, that main action of, of changing the flume, the future land use map, which, which will come with this document, is, is one of the more significant ways to provide for those housing options. Now, one of the, the reasons for recommended updates to, to zoning is not only to enable for those mixed uses at, at, say, the, the main streets, where we asked that question and saw, you know, support of, of infill and mixed use at main streets in the Delamere area, in, in downtown and major corridors. That's to enable that, and, and as we've discussed in detail, to, to try to move away from, from the PUD, the Plan Unit Development Process, which is not very predictable, towards something that's, that's clear and predictable. So that's, that's listed here. We, we say accomplished in the plan, really, this plan, updates the future land use map. And then recommended actions going forward is to update the zoning code and the development review process. And we have also, you know, still recommended that, at, at least where development of higher intensity and infill and mixed use occurs, that that is addressed with, with form-based strategies. You don't need to apply those to existing neighborhoods. They, they can be useful. We have seen a number of comments that have discussed the, the sort of size of new housing infill and such. And that's, that's something that can be addressed, but at a minimum on, on the corridors. And I know that there was a question previously from slide about, about form-based codes and really what's, what's, what's different in that. We can talk specifically about that to the degree that would help. But essentially, they look first at the, at the scale of buildings and how buildings transition between between each other, with a greater focus on those details and a lesser focus on some nuances of use, even though use is regulated. And then some discussion and subsequent actions about engaging in building more smaller developers in the community and around that can participate in developing corridors and main streets, but really keeping that out of neighborhoods and towards these areas that we've seen more support for growth. Then we talk about, here we said, housing a community through the life course, which is aging in community, trying to get a little bit away from jargon as much as we can. And here talked about the affordability of housing, the location of housing, what structures currently exist in the city, which is principally single detached homes. Though you can see on the chart that there are some small and larger multifamily buildings. We talked about the diversity of housing types and aging, and how that ties into opportunities for infill on corridors. A bit on the aging too, is a discussion of the opportunity to find housing and if desired to move from larger houses to a smaller home within your community in a way that allows for those houses to go back to the market, where you don't really have the opportunity to build more single detached homes that aren't replacing existing ones. We discuss accessory dwelling units, and then conclude with that. Here is, of course, the land use. We did note the S-CAP recommendation or policy around providing and prioritizing missing middle housing. Though here, the application is on those corridors and neighborhood centers, Delamere Industrial Area, downtown, and so forth. Then some of the similar items of the zoning code about identifying places for accessory dwelling units, but also being very specific, because there's not 100% broad-based acceptance to be very specific about the types of accessory dwellings and where they may be appropriate in the city. We also looked at, you don't have a lot of availability for incentivizing more senior housing, other than perhaps available public lands that could go to RFP for additional senior housing. That is another issue related to affordability is similar. So because affordability is complex, we discussed it in greater detail. It could be, you know, we could take twice as long, you know, that's sort of a question for you all in terms of addressing affordability. But here we deal a lot with what is, what are the levels of affordability in the city, and what are the aspects that can affect that? Land costs, construction costs, approvals processes, the availability to achieve naturally occurring attainable housing, which is just housing that can be built and is more affordable because of the way that it's built, but limitations that you have for doing so. And so, you know, in this, again, and we can just get to this, we repeat the fact that changing future land use is important in this, and that updating the zoning code and approvals processes are important. There may be some additional opportunities for expedited processing for projects that are related to more affordable housing. Again, where you do have an opportunity to leverage land assets, that is one way to remove or significantly reduce the land cost. And then subsequent, we did discuss inclusionary zoning, which is an opportunity that you could have for requiring some degree of affordable housing with new development, but also discuss that there are concerns that you should have in terms of exactly at what point that kicks in, because the affordable units are really managed, they're sort of, what we call cross-subsidized. So you end up on a higher price for the other units to pay for the affordable units. So, you know, so it's a topic that requires some specific analysis when deciding that number is at 30 units. Here, here in Corlin, they chose 20 units. It did stall the housing market for a while, but it picked back up and now is working fine, but it's a pretty low scale to add that to. And then, you know, discussion of major employers and their opportunities to use lands to construct additional housing for employees. So I didn't want to, hopefully you all had an opportunity to read it, and that was one reason for providing just this section. Another reason is to ask some of these questions in terms of what you all need for a master plan. And as we get into writing the rest of the chapters, what's the right balance in the master plan between detail that's provided and the length of the document? You know, we could write this section twice as long, but I don't know if that's going to be that helpful in using it. In Royal Oak, how are the actions of master plan best detailed? For instance, should we be recommending a plan to address this or a policy to address that? Or the item that should be done, like addressing inclusionary zoning, for instance? So what's this level of specificity that works best for Royal Oak? And then really, in here, in chapter four, in this draft, what needs more explanation? What's missing and what needs to be changed? So this is both, say, a chapter four critique and feedback, but also direction as we look to develop other chapters of the plan.
All right. Oops. All right. Are there, is that, Matt, does that wrap up your initial presentation here?
Yeah, yeah. And then we can also talk schedule of review after this, but that's the initial presentation of the chapter, yeah, so we're definitely looking for feedback.
All right. So, Ms. Binkie.
I just have two clarifying questions. The questions, Matt, that you're showing us right now in the blue, these questions you're presenting now, we didn't see them yet, right? These are, they're not in the document we reviewed earlier, correct?
Correct.
Oh, I can't hear.
You said.
You said, correct? Oh, okay. Okay. So and then the other clarifying question, I want to understand, because I think, I want to make sure I understand this. In Michigan, I understood that at the state level, we're not allowed at the local level to have inclusionary zoning, but then I looked up that there was a 2020 bill that went forward, I don't know if it passed, that said we can, if we locally pass our own ordinance that says we can have it. And so I just would like some clarification. In Michigan, are we permitted by the state to have inclusionary zoning or not?
It's my understanding that you are, and we ask that question of McKenna, and can provide further detail on that for you.
Okay. And if I understood your document correctly, if we would like to proceed with it, then that's something that we at the city would need an ordinance, and so Commissioner Douglas and Mayor Fournier would be the torchbearers of something like that with our commission, because we'd need something to put in place, if I understood this content and the other Anyone can tell me, our city attorney, somebody? Or that's something we have to clarify?
We need clarification.
Because the point I bring up is because we do spend time on this, and I know in other states you can do it, and so I just want to make sure, if it's going to be a significant portion of this section, I want to make sure what the legal, the legal direction we would need to make sure we could move on this, if it's in the document, is what I'm saying. So that would be a point of clarification for me, for all of us, I mean. And then generally, I thought it was a good length and content, I thought was pretty good in terms of what we would use, but I would defer to others about what they think about that, for sure.
All right. There are other comments? I have a sort of procedural question. This is a public hearing, yes? No, it's not. Okay. So I guess I would like to talk about, Matt, I would like to talk about the way you work, the way you like to work, the way you're willing to work, and on what schedule you want to work. I'll tell you, I thought that the chapter was nice. I know when I'm writing a brief, I don't want anybody to see it until it's almost done, but I have to tell you, I felt like this is sort of a disembodied chapter, because your chapter one with goals and priorities, I think that I would have liked to seen that maybe first. And to be perfectly honest, if I had my wish, I'd like to see a full draft. I know that's a nervous thing, because then how do we proceed? You have a full draft, and then we have to have a process for reviewing it, people to comment on it, get feedback, and then revise it. I'm not comfortable myself with going chapter by chapter. I'd like to see a full draft, but that's just me, because I think they all tie together. I mean, this is a public policy document, and public policy, you know, goals and priorities by nature are competing, even opposing, and you have to balance them, you have to figure out ways to make them coexist. So it's a little difficult to just see one silo of this piece. But that, maybe that's not the way you guys work or aren't comfortable working. I'd like to discuss that, because I don't want to wait until 2025 to get a final draft. I'd like to see myself, and I'm only speaking for myself, is that I would like to have a final, not a final draft, a full draft a few months from now, and then spend time getting feedback and revising it, so we have maybe a final that we can look at middle of the year or something.
Yeah, I'd say we're flexible when it comes to that. So this was, you know, a proposal, is it easier for you all to review in chunks like this or to do the whole thing? If the preference is proceed, provide some feedback on this chapter, which is helpful in terms of how we proceed with the rest of the document, that would certainly be helpful. We're happy to provide the full draft or to do it section by section. So if that's your preference, we're happy to go in that direction, though we didn't want to wait any further before discussing it.
Could you tell me what you've done in other circumstance with other clients? Is it, do you do it either way, or do you stick with one way? What's your practice?
I'd say most of the time, you're doing the whole thing, typically. This was, I'd say, a reaction to the desire to get into the specifics in the review. So I'm happy to do it the typical way of writing the whole thing.
All right. That's my preference. We'll be interested in what other people have to say. Mr. Gantina.
I tend to agree with the chair. I'm really concerned about the timeline in general. I think reviewing it chapter by chapter at each of our monthly meetings is going to really prolong the overall schedule. To that effect, the, one of the few things that we can do as a planning commission to affect that schedule is review that full document and try to be more expedient in that regard. I do think, if we do get a full draft document to review, I'm not sure, you know, getting the document in month one and then providing the feedback necessarily in the next month, if that'll be enough time to kind of go through all the comments. But generally speaking, I think the overall schedule is already elongated from what we originally looked at. I think reviewing chapter, even one chapter a month is just not going to get us where we need to go, when we need to get there. So I'd be in favor of looking at a much larger document at one time versus chapter by chapter.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I have a comment about sort of the schedule, but I do want to speak to the document that we've looked at here today. Thank you, Matt. This, nowhere in this draft document do I see proposals to build apartment buildings in our existing single-family neighborhoods. So can we, can we just put that to rest? No, we can't, of course, because that's the rallying cry. But the iterative process we've gone through here, the charrettes, the feedback sessions, all resulted in a document which recommends, A, missing middle housing, B, that is located in commercial corridors, in industrial districts, and to some extent downtown adjacent. So, and the illustrations that accompany this document show that development in those kinds of locations, not in the, not on, in the middle of Vincetta Boulevard. And I was, I'm gratified by the fact that, you know, the response to the question, do you think development should be more predictable? Because that's been a central premise from DPZ from the start, that if the citizens know what is allowed and developers know what is allowed, to some extent, that helps us build more economical housing, because developers can streamline their processes, they don't have to go through the whole plan unit development process. So I think these recommendations help us move down that path of greater consensus and more efficiency. The, really, the outlier issue is accessory dwelling units. I'm somewhat gratified that there was some support for that. I don't think we need accessory dwelling units to meet the housing demand. The studies we've heard from DPZ say that there is a market for 60 new dwelling units in Royal Oak a year, and that's not much. We, the city, are not building those dwelling units. Developers are, and developers will build them according to market demand. If there's too much multifamily or missing middle housing in Royal Oak, then rents will go down and developers will not build any more of them. And if there is continued demand and continued high prices for those units, then people will build them at a speed that the market can absorb. So I'm very comfortable letting the market make those decisions in terms of the housing that we develop. Now, I'll talk a little bit about the process. We have, we are appointed planning commissioners, and this is a big job. This is one of the most important committees that the city has and most consequential. And if we, as commissioners, have to make more time to review a full master plan document rather than doing this piecemeal, I completely agree with the chair on this, I am willing to dedicate the time to do that. And if indeed we need special meetings, perhaps establish a schedule of special meetings, that provides more opportunities for public input and gives us more time to discuss the details that we might want to discuss. And I think we, as commissioners, I think our duty as commissioners is to budget the time, if as necessary, to review a full plan.
All right. Thank you. Other comments?
And I'll just quickly follow up on those comments. I think frankly, for me, just from a mental exercise, if I was looking at a more complete document, you know, tying the pieces and putting the pieces of the puzzle together will just, frankly, the way at least my mind works, make a whole lot more sense. I find myself like jumping from island to island, and I find that process a little frustrating and a little, and I'm not getting the connectivity that I need to really sort of see the big picture. So yes, a complete document, at least by me, would be very welcomed.
All right. Other comments? Mr. Gantina.
Well, I just want to reinforce the point that Commissioner Douglas just made with regards to some of the elements of the chapter here. Giving the ability to do something doesn't automatically dictate that it will happen. So a lot of the, you know, the means and methods by which we're suggesting that additional housing could be brought to the city, enabling that ability doesn't necessarily mean that every property owner that suddenly has that ability is going to do that. But certainly, if anyone has the desire to do that, if they're not enabled to do that, even with private property rights, that's sort of what the discussion is here. And I think a lot of the fears and the rallying cries that have been used to the contrary really don't reflect that notion of, enabling something doesn't automatically dictate it will happen. So I just want to reinforce that point that you brought up, because I think that is an important one.
All right. Other, Ms. Binkie.
I just wanted to comment overall, again, reading this chapter and having gone through this process so far, I think it's very reflective, again, of the diversity of our community, and also about, again, selecting diverse areas for some of these newer missing middle developments while respecting existing neighborhoods. while respecting existing neighborhoods. And I also liked very much the comment about form-based code districts, about the potential to doing form-based codes in certain areas as maybe a pilot or something rather than for the whole city so that when you get into that form leading, again, it can be in more diversified areas rather than over, overall in the city. But I thought it was a good overview. I said the inclusion area zoning, I would like some clarification on. But overall, I appreciate it, and I think the visuals connected with the narrative were very illustrative, and I can't wait to see the glossary. Woo hoo.
Commissioner Douglas again.
Sorry, let me also add. The amount of public engagement, of communication surrounding this document was extraordinary, and I say this to DPZ and also to our internal staff because a lot of that fell to our community engagement specialists, our internal staff. The distribution of the, a summary document in Detroit Today, or Royal Oak Today Magazine, which goes to every household in Royal Oak, is extraordinary. And the proof is in the number of responses we had to this Thursday, the survey. 3,400-plus people took the time to take this survey. In the world of survey research, you can predict the decisions made by people all across America with a pool of 300, representative pool of 300 people weighing in on the subject. So this amount of public content demonstrates the effectiveness of the community engagement and the information that we did and verifies to me, gives me great confidence in making decisions based on that level of consensus in our community.
All right, Mr. Ellison.
When this discussion started, I was leading the other way. I was leading towards this doing an individual piece at a time so we can take the time and study it. The last thing in the world we want to do is rush this process. I've been through this process before. The last time we did it, it got very, very ugly because we tried to get it done, to get pushed to get it done. But hearing some of the comments of my colleagues here, if we can commit to the time it takes to review these sections, how am I doing it with a full document? I just don't want us to miss anything in our goal to try to get it done. If we've got a full page here, we want to get it done as opposed to a little page here, we want to get it done. I'm just afraid, we need to take the time to do it right, and I don't want to screw it up. So if we can commit to taking the time, maybe make different meetings, separate meetings, whatever, but we just need to do this because there isn't a more important document that the planning commission could produce other than the master plan for the future of the city.
All right, other comments? So I, I'm going to talk about the process and the schedule a bit. I guess I would ask, I'll tell you what's, in my mind, I could be completely wrong, but that we would set a time for DPZ to come forth with a full draft. When we had that full draft, then we would, I would think, we would schedule at least one special meeting for public input and discussion. I would also think you would have it on the website so people could also comment on the website. And then we'd have to have enough time for that. And then how far in the future we would want to give ourselves for revisions, I don't know yet. But can, can, Matt, can you give us some advice on this? How much time do you need? How much time do we need, in your experience?
Yeah, well, how much time you need, we'll have to figure that out. That depends on the body, and you all are pretty detail-oriented. So I think the special meetings are, would be helpful to follow that. We'll need about two and a half months for the whole thing, I would say, to get a full first draft for us to meet on. I think the written comments are particularly helpful and to, and to review those together. So, you know, if we can provide, provide the draft, take written comments, take public comment on that, and then review, review that feedback together in a special meeting and see if we need, from there, we may need to go into further detail and say, two meetings to do that first review. But that's going to push us to the second draft, and we'll still have the opportunity to do further review on the second draft. So I think it's probably best to move towards the full draft and to schedule, to plan on two meetings for that draft specifically to get the input needed to then come towards draft two. And I think once we have those meetings, we'll know what the draft two review should look like.
So, did I just hear you say April 30th you're going to give us a full first draft? That's two and a half months.
It's two and a half months, that's when we'll get it done.
All right. Okay, well, we'll put that marker down, and then I would think that we'll, we have time to figure out the schedule for the meetings, but we'll certainly take your counsel on that as well.
Great, great, sounds good.
All right, more questions for our consultant? All right, well, hearing none, thank you very much. Appreciate it, good work. We'll be waiting for your, for your draft.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, anything for, okay, very good. Thank you so much. All right. The next item of business is election of officers. Mr. Esbry.
I am prepared if they are so interested to re-up our current Chair and Vice Chair as the nominees.
I accept that nomination.
Who's Vice Chair?
If you want it.
It's Woody.
I would accept it if you voted for me.
I would second that motion.
I'm fine with it.
He had to think about it. Okay, is there other nominations? All right, so there's a motion for the Chair and the Vice Chair to be re-elected for another year, any further discussion of this? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. All favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, next.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just, that is basically the end of our agenda, right? Other than the non-agenda items?
Correct. I want to make a statement, not a statement, just a clarification. We, early in the meeting, we had discussion about public comment versus public hearing. And there's a distinct difference between the two. A public hearing is something that's noticed. It's got parameters of, you've got a notice within a certain area. Many times, it's demanded by state law that you have to hold a public hearing. And that is a public hearing. You call, you write the letter to people, "Come and talk about this. We're going to hold this public hearing." Public comment is simply people coming up and saying, without notice, without being told, this item's on the agenda, they want to talk about it. And when I was Chair of this committee, we always had public comment for each separate item because so much of what we do at this table affects the neighborhood and affects the neighbors. And it was always easier for them to hear what the project is rather than doing a comment section before anything happens. So I would always allow them to have the public comment after they hear the presentation. And many times, there was no public comment if it was a good plan. So I just want to clarify that because we were going, the words being changed are being used interchanging. Public comment and public, and public hearing, two distinctly different things. And, you know, it could be, if we mistakenly have a public comment and call it a public hearing, and then something goes by the wayside down the line, someone could say, "Well, I was there for the public hearing." Well, it really wasn't a public hearing. Well, why wasn't it, blah, 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 blah. So I think, because right on our agenda, we say, "Public comment on non-agenda items." But I think we should have public comment on all of our site plan approvals and sign approvals and that kind of stuff. That's just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't know how I feel about that. I have to think about it a little bit more because, you know, at the City Commission, we do public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and people come and talk and listen. And sometimes if there is a more controversial issue, we kind of prep it and say, "Hey, you may have heard some things." We have folks that like to, for whatever their reasons are, say things that are wrong or patently untrue. And we have to, you know, give people the facts, and sometimes that affects their public comment a little bit, knowing the truth. But I would say that at a minimum, item C, we should probably just call it public comment and just get rid of the non-agenda part and allow folks to talk about anything. And then also, in the script of public comment, like, hey, if you're here to speak on the public hearing, you know, note that we'll have it, you know, later, and you can talk then. That might, kind of similar, basically just model what we do at the City Commission. I think that might be a little more clear to folk.
Mr. Ellison had his hand up again.
Yeah, the reason the non-agenda items was brought up because we run into a situation, we have a public comment, and we go down the agenda item, people say, "Well, I want to say something that's not there." But there was no time for them to say it. But if we could, I have no problem with taking off non-agenda items. That was just putting aside separately so people would know that this is where they talk about their item that's not on our agenda. I mean, if we want to designate that you allow public comment on each individual item, because that's the way we've always done it at the planning commission. I know, City Commission is different, it's an entirely different animal, having around both. I know it's a different animal. It's, it would be difficult at a City Commission to have public comment on every item you guys do because, because, you know, you're deeper into what, you know, your stuff is more vital to the community as opposed to this, the, the site plans are vital to the neighborhood. I just, that's the way I look at it, so.
Mr., what is next, sorry?
I'd be in favor of just making, just public comment and removing the non-agenda items for a couple of different reasons. One, certainly we want to be able to give, you know, ample opportunity for public input, whether it's an agenda item or not. Allowing public comment at the beginning allows for that. If it is something that requires a public hearing, additionally, they will have the opportunity for, to make public comment on that particular agenda item. So I think by removing the non-agenda items and just making a public comment at the beginning alleviates a lot of things. Whether or not, you know, for example, some of these sign variances, things that aren't necessarily public hearings or would naturally come with a public comment period, that's maybe a different point of discussion, but I'd be in favor of getting rid of the non-agenda clarifier on the public comment.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, so I think site plans and special land uses are different from a sign ordinance. I don't know that the public can, I mean, can contribute productively to a sign ordinance when we're dealing with the technicalities of the ordinance and what we know as, because we're the, we have two hats, three hats, actually. I mean, we're the planning commission, we're the brownfield authority, and we're the sign board. And I think our role in reviewing signs is different and does not, should not automatically call for public comment.
Mr. Ellison.
See, I disagree, and I'll use the sign ordinance as an example. If we've got someone that wants to put up a sign and they're going to erect it on, you know, some piece of property, and it's obstructing the vision of some neighbor, and that neighbor would have to know that upfront at first public comment, only to find out when we get back on the item that it's been changed. That's why I always liked having the ability of the neighbors of wherever the site plan is to have input when they, when they hear the plan.
The site plan?
Yeah, the site plan, well, site plan at any development. I mean, it's just our agenda items. The brownfield, we're going to move brownfield, it'll be covered by public hearing anyways. But any, any site plan issue, you know, we're building an apartment complex down the street on 11 Mile Road. The neighbors should have an opportunity to talk about that, but they need to know what the plan is. The one we just did at 11 Mile and Phillips down there, that plan totally changed when they brought it back to us because of what the neighbors said at the first hearing. So if the neighbors are only allowed to speak at first public hearing, first public comment, then we've lost our momentum. I just think it's transparency. I think we should give the neighborhood the opportunity to address every site plan that comes in front of us at a separate public comment for that item. I did it for years, and it worked, it worked well.
Mr. Esbry.
Are you finished, or is somebody wanting?
No, I'm done. I just think that's the plan we used when I was Chairman.
Right, no, 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 and I'm of the mindset, it doesn't matter if it's a sign variance, a site plan, or brownfield. My mindset has always been, I want to hear from the people. As you just said, whoever's going to discover the plutonium, let them speak.
Ms. Beeky.
I guess, I'm either way on the signs, but I understand the idea of maybe we should even trial it for three months and just have it on everything, a public comment and see. But the other point I want to make tied to one of the comments earlier is similar to Birmingham and Berkeley and a few other communities, the idea of having a sign at the site that's going to be potentially discussed in these meetings might be helpful to alleviate some of this angst about the transparency factor. And I think the beautiful signs for the survey kind of proved that people are aware when that sign is available. So that might be a relatively simple way to help publicize some of those discussions related to public comments. Anyway, I just, it ties in, I think, to this a little bit, but.
I didn't, I'm going to go with you.
Just briefly, and if we did that, put a QR code on the sign.
Yeah, on the sign subject, can, Joseph, can you come back with us and find out how the other community? I mean, do they make the petitioner pay for that sign? Or does the city cover that sign in their fees for the site plan review?
We can look into that.
Let us know next month and we can make it. I think it's a good idea to have that sign out there.
I want to say, we talked about the topic as well, and the staff provided the report that we can go back and dust off and.
Dust off and let us know next month.
Something like that.
Now, the sign that was shown here was a generic sign that could have been put out every time because it just said, "This property is going to go up for zoning and call this number."
That's public, and that's a public hearing issue, right? A zoning would be a public hearing issue. I'm not saying put it up for every site plan review. You put, if there's a scheduled public hearing and we mail out 300 feet from the site and put the sign on the property saying, "This is going to be coming up," we're getting much more transparency, as they said tonight, with the sign rather than just the 300 people. So, but I don't want to put a sign out for every site plan approval. That's not necessary.
Commissioner Douglas.
And nor for every zoning change. I mean, if somebody needs an additional one-foot setback for their garage, I mean, we need to have some scalability in terms of what we put a sign out for.
Just for the ones that would have the flyers that are, whatever triggers you sending to the neighbors at that 300 feet, that would be the, I would think, the.
Okay, I don't know who was first over here. I'm going to go with Woody here.
Two things to say, actually. One's a question for the attorney in terms of, obviously, there's things that, there's items that are mandated that we have a public hearing and allow for the public comment. We're discussing allowing for public comment for items that currently don't require it. Are we, is that within our purview to simply make that choice and decision? That's sort of my first question, then will there be a separate comment after that?
So, under the OMA, public comment, you're only required as a public body to provide one opportunity somewhere in the agenda. You can pick in the agenda where you want to put it as far as an opportunity for the public to comment on anything. It doesn't even have to be agenda-related. As far as allowing public to comment on any other items that aren't a public hearing, you certainly have the ability to request public comment at those times when appropriate. You know, I've heard some discussion regarding distinguishing between a sign variance and maybe a site plan review type of framework going forward and whether or not you would consider additional public comment on an individual basis for those particular items. You certainly, as a board, can decide on your own when you want to add a public comment portion to anything. You do have that right, but you're only obligated to provide one public comment portion on the agenda, as you do now, and then obviously allow public comment, as you know, for public hearing matters. So, but you do, in direct answer to your question, yes, you can add it if you so desire.
All right, thank you. So my second comment is related to what Commissioner Douglas had just stated. I think it's a very slippery slope if, from a noticing perspective, we say, you know, "We're going to notice any zoning variance request, but if it's a minimal request, we don't notice it." Because a one-foot variance on a single-family home, as an example, where, while we may think it's a minimal disturbance to anybody that doesn't require noticing, as we would normally otherwise notice with signage or whatever, that immediately adjacent neighbor might have a totally different opinion. And so I think if we start being subjective with how we're approaching what qualifies for the noticing that we're talking about versus what doesn't, it becomes a very slippery slope because of that subjectivity. If we do implement a policy, which I'm in favor of, of, you know, more transparency, and I've seen many cities do signs very efficiently in their generic signs, I don't think that we qualify that with, there are certain projects that are exempt from it or there's certain subjectivity that gets applied to it. If it's going through a certain process that requires the noticing. If it's going through a certain process that requires the noticing, it requires the noticing, period.
If it's required by state law, which most of these are, we've got to notice, we've got to follow the law, so right, Joseph? Do we, do we notice anything that's not a legal requirement for a public hearing?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. So if it's a legal requirement, no matter how big or how small the change is, we are obligated by law to make that notice. Okay, and that's the public hearing. Going back to the side question, I mean, yes, we. Where was I? Okay, going back to the side question, okay. We had, we opened it up tonight, and we had two people come up and made small comments. We don't normally get comments on a sign variance. We just, we just have it, if we open it for public comment, people don't come. However, if we open it for public comment and we've got 10 people there objecting to this sign, I want to know why. I want the neighbors to tell me why it's objectionable that we give this sign variance. And if we don't give them the opportunity, and we go back to only have your public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and they don't hear the details of what the sign is, they don't have an opportunity to address what the issue is.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want to say, echo, I was going to say what Mr. Gantina said, like, the slippery slope, like, one foot may be a bigger deal than 20 feet in some cases, depending on where you're at. And I think that, you know, the chair has a lot of privilege, his body has a lot of privilege, we did it tonight, Mr. Esbry made a motion. In most cases, we don't need public comment, let's say, on a sign, but if we know people came to public comment, and 10 people came out and said, hey, the next, you know, agenda item, number four, is on this sign, we have these issues with it, we can then, as a body, know that there's folks that are here and say, okay, well, we're going to discuss it, you know, they're going to stay if they can, and then we can open it up for additional comments after the petitioner has made a chance to present to counter those points or, you know, whatever. I think we have a lot, I don't think we have to make it mandatory in every issue, but I do think that any commissioner here can open up public comment if it deems necessary and be agile and flexible. As it relates to the big signs, we do notice people, we put stuff in people's mailboxes. And I've, since I've been up here, since I've been mayor, since I've been a commissioner, I've had almost zero cases that someone has come up to me and said, I wasn't aware that something was on the agenda. You know, most people who care and are concerned, you know, get the notices in the mail, the people that are affected. If there's other things we want to open that up to that maybe we should be more, that folks do need to know about in terms of mailings or whatever, I'm open to that. But typically, what you'll find is a big sign on top of stuff going into people's mailboxes. I mean, I'd like to see where we're at with GIS. People that submit their email addresses into the system can get emails. So I think that, for me, we want to be transparent, but we don't want to, you know, burden staff and burden everybody if we're not going to get the turnout we think we're going to get. If we want to inform people, we should inform them and meet them where they're at. If we're going 10 times over that and spinning our wheels and nobody's responding to that communication because they don't care or they have no concerns, then, you know, I think we have to be, we have to find that middle ground.
You're getting confused here. Are you talking about noticing on a public hearing plus a sign? Or are you talking about noticing on every public comment?
Thing.
So I broke that up into two pieces. The public comment part was just more or less, since you kind of brought up the public comment, but you also had mentioned the sign, publishing a sign.
And in line with the, with the notice, the required public, all I want is a sign for a required public hearing because the law states 300 foot. And many, many projects in this community, if we draw a circle 300 foot around the center of the project, nobody gets a notice.
But then I would argue then, mail to 500 feet.
And then that's fine, that's kind of being flexible. And the problem has always been with that, if the law says 300 foot and you go 500 foot, your petitioner's going to come back and say, why did you make an exception for me? And so you just, you just got to be careful.
That's the point.
Is 300 foot the right number, 500 foot? We need to change the state law. But again, it is two separate items. I think the public needs to have an opportunity to have their comments in a public comment vernacular, just, I don't like this. And also, we got to make sure we cover the law with the public noticing that the law says on zoning changes and other things.
All right, Mr. Esbry.
Mr. Esbry, if we could perhaps wrap this up, because I feel like we guys should have put them, we're going in circles. What if we ask staff simply to drop a quick memo, two presentations next month with a couple of options, and then we can look at it and make a decision?
Because I want to make a comment. Commissioner Douglas.
You have the gall.
No, you were next.
No, he's right.
Okay, so I just, I want to say, this is, I think this is an important topic. I agree with your suggestion that maybe staff can give us options. I think when we're talking about the sign, my understanding is we're just talking about a sign when a public hearing is required. They're going to be generic, this is what I, generic signs, you're going to buy six of them or something like that, and, because that's about all we ever have on an agenda. And so you're going to go out and put the sign on the property for those items, same sign over and over again, every month, and I got to believe that will be less expensive than writing up, doing a mailing, figuring out who to mail it to, and mail a unique mailing every time. I would think that would be very inexpensive.
I mean, in substitute, that was interesting.
We are required to mail, no matter what.
Mailing still has to happen.
Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't, yeah, whatever we have to do to meet the legal requirements, we should do. The sign is a cherry on the top, which I think is associated with the property. It's easy for people driving by to see it and take notice. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. So I'll leave it at that. Now, the other thing about the public comment, I do believe we talked about this before, I may be the only one who remembers it, or maybe I dreamed it, but when we were, you think I did, when we were talking about the rules for this committee, it was brought up that if you have public comment on non-agenda items, and somebody wants to speak on an agenda item, they're shut out.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think that the, and I think that we talked about this at the time, and I think council told us that even then, we had the right to ask for public comment anytime we wanted it. I think that's what, I think we had that discussion. So I think we should leave the public comment on non-agenda items where it is, and I think maybe we need to get into a practice of allowing public comment on.
Bingo.
Yeah, which is what you said.
Yeah.
So I'm agreeing with that. Comment.
I think that what we're trying to avoid is, with a public hearing, having people come to public comment and talk about the issue, and then speaking again during a public hearing. I mean, I think that's our end goal. As long as there are other items that are not public hearings, people can speak to them at the beginning of the meeting, can talk about anything they want. They can talk about the public hearing if they want to, it's their time, but we can encourage them to combine their comments to the actual public hearing itself.
I usually do that, yes. If somebody starts talking about an agenda item, I usually say, hey, that's going to be an agenda item, you get your chance.
But I, I mean, I think we, I think we have to allow people to say whatever they want in their three minutes. I mean, we can tell them, you know, not agenda items, but if they want to talk about agenda items, I want them to talk about agenda items.
That's fine. 90% of people will follow the rules and 95% of people, so, okay. I think we have a bunch of input there. Mr. Murphy, do you mind, by the way, just have a memo saying what I said?
Sorry.
Okay, very good. Next, are the, anything else on this before we move to the non-action items? Okay, non-action items. Mr. Murphy.
You have in front of you the annual report for last year and the most recent quarterly things that were approved administratively. They're simply for your amusement and amazement, there's no need to act upon them, please.
Joseph?
I have a matter I want to bring, if there's no comment on either of those two items.
Seeing none, you have the floor.
I just wanted to introduce a new attorney in our office, Josh Markham, he's in the audience there. You might be seeing more of him, you know, due to a lot of work having to be done, he may, you may be seeing him sit in this chair in the future meetings. We're breaking him in slowly, and please take it easy on him when he does take this chair. So I just wanted to associate a face with the possibility of coming up here.
Are you saying we broke you in too fast?
No, I've been broken for a long time, but it's, yeah. So, welcome, Josh, and we're happy to have him, and he's a great asset, and he certainly will be a benefit to your discussions up here.
All right, thank you. All right, before we get to the adjournment part, does anybody, any of the commissioners have anything else they want to put on the record before we seek an adjournment motion?
I'll do it in my motion, if you're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I think so.
In the spirit of the young lady that spoke to us tonight, since she lives in Royal Oak, and she wants neighbors, thank you. I think that's what we should have done, and move to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, none, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.